Would you like to call the order of a regular meeting of the Zion City Council? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Duttine.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Flomini.
Here.
Commissioner Harrison.
Here. This evening, we have asked Dave Adams. Dave?
Mayor and City Council, I just want to, first of all, say thank you for letting the ZBMA pastors come here and open you with prayer. It is such a privilege for us to be able to do that. We're very grateful for. And also, on behalf of the ZBMA, Mayor Lane Harrison, we would like to just wish you our deepest sympathies. We're so sorry that you lost your father, and we're praying for you, for God's comfort, and grateful for his life as well, because we've been given you, so we're blessed. So let's just pray. Father in heaven, Lord, I just thank you so much for your care, even the snow, Lord, as hard as it is to move, Lord, it's beautiful, and you replenish the earth, and you're so faithful. We thank you for how you provide for us, meal after meal, all the things that you have given us, Lord. We are just so blessed, and we know that it is from your hand. Father, I just thank you for tonight, everything that it represents, Lord, we don't take it lightly, the freedom that we have in this great nation, the blessings that you've given us, Lord, with leaders who serve and who love our people, Lord, we just thank you. I thank you for this room and what's represented here, with our police and our fire departments, civil workers, and, Father, for this group in front of me, and all of these people that labor so hard because they love this wonderful city. Father, thank you for them, thank you for their lives, thank you for their love, thank you for their care, thank you that each one, Lord, even no matter how different our ideas might be, Father, we long for this city to prosper. And so, Lord, tonight, we ask for your wisdom and for your guidance. Lord, I pray that you would give this team of people the wisdom and the integrity to make hard decisions, to do that which is right. And, Father, I pray that you would just give them wisdom and justice, Father, for people in our city that are hungry, or cold, or homeless, or fatherless, or motherless, Lord, I pray that you would help us, Lord, to help them. Now, Lord, we pray that you would just bless this evening and guide each step of the way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Would you please join in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda changes to come from the floor? Hearing none. Citizen comments? There are no citizen comments this evening. Item six is the consent agenda. Would clerk please read the consent agenda into the record.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on January 20th, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. Bills, vouchers 120141 through 120236 drawn on First Mary Bank, total $398,660.52.
Do you prefer the consent agenda? Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duttine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Flomini.
Aye.
Mayor Harrison.
Aye. Item seven is consider passing ordinances as follows. Item A, to purchase certain property located at 3318 Sheridan Road. Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. 3318 Sheridan Road is the Tooby Lumber property on Sheridan, and it's about an acre and a half that we're looking at. This was put before the TIF board to see if they would be interested in this as potential development opportunity for the city, for us to kind of get control over some vacant property, to use down the road for development and economic incentive. And TIF did recommend approval of using TIF refunds to purchase this property. We received an appraisal on the property based on what the bank was asking to make sure that it was in line, and the appraisal actually came in right at where we were making our offer, so that actually came in, and they actually deducted off of that the value, the cost of demolition of the existing properties. They estimated forty thousand. We have to see where that comes in, based on the environmental survey for possible asbestos remediation, things like that. But we have an accepted offer in front of you from the bank, from the brokers that are handling it, and the attorneys looked over this, and it's very much written in our favor that we could get out of it basically for any reason, it actually says, or for no reason at all, we can back out of this, but we still would have to do a environmental, a phase one environmental to make sure everything was good on the site before we want to go forward, but we have sufficient due diligence time in here to do that. Again, this comes out of TIF funds, and TIF board does recommend approval.
What is the recommendation of council? Support. To support it? Yep. Move forward?
I move approval of the ordinance to purchase certain property located at 3318 Sheridan Road, Zion, Illinois.
We have a motion and a second, and we will get the surveys done, and the asbestos surveys, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If there's something glaring or huge, it'll be brought back, I'm assuming, before...
Correct. We would go back to the current owners and either negotiate, renegotiate price, or discuss with council how to proceed.
Very good.
And if there is nothing wrong, we'll just proceed?
Correct.
Very good. Discussion, further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duttine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Flomini.
Aye.
Mayor Harrison.
Aye. Item B, granting a variance from Zion Municipal Code Chapter 34.43, Section 903.2, regarding automatic sprinkler system requirements for property located at 4242 Illinois Route 173. Chief Lewis.
Thank you, your honor. This is the Captain Hook Storage Units. Mr. Hook's present, if you have any questions, but he's looking to add on to his existing cold storage units. He's asking for a variance from the sprinkler ordinance, which requires, currently, we require sprinklers for any new construction. For this particular type of construction, it's 100% non-combustible steel-woven concrete block, there's no electrical sources within, there's no heat sources within the building, there's no storage of flammable liquids within these buildings, so there's really no ignition source, and there's no life safety because people are not in the structure. So I see no reason to grant a variance for the sprinkler ordinance. Not, or not grant a variance. There's no reason for the sprinklers.
So you recommended that we grant the variance?
Yep.
City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve the variance?
Second.
And a second. Discussion.
I would normally oppose this, but in this particular case, I think we'd want to...
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duttine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Flomini.
Aye.
Mayor Harrison.
Aye. Item C is to purchase certain property located at 3340 Sheridan Road, and 3319 Emes Avenue, and 3336 Colgate. Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This kind of goes hand in hand with the Tooby Lumber property. This is all the old Dooms Theater property. We've been in discussions with the current owner for quite a while on this, and, you know, we talked to him, saying, the old theater that was there was just unusable, and had to be demolished, and restore the site back to natural, to usable development land. And he agreed with that, and knew that we were interested in purchasing the property, and has worked with us throughout the process to get this going. What we'd be looking at is actually the one and a half acres where the Dooms Theater actually sat on, and then there's two parcels behind it, right across from Colgate. The total comes to about three and a quarter acres, that again, is connected to the Tooby Lumber property, so we'd be looking at probably about four and a half acres total on the corner that we would have for development opportunities, for economic incentives, to basically kind of control our destiny of what is on the entrance on the south side of Sheridan Road there, and also encourage development in that area, to kind of spark everything going on down there. This was also presented with the TIF board, to use TIF funds to purchase this, and the TIF board does recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve? Or not to approve?
I move to approve the purchase of the three properties.
Second.
We have a motion for the approval to purchase these three properties, and a second. Discussion.
Your honor, I wondered if Director Nabel could go into a little bit more detail on why we're doing this, and a couple of our fears that we have for that property down there.
The current, well, actually, the prior owner of the property had some interest from some dollar stores, gas stations, things of that nature, that did not really meet with the plan that we would have for that area of Sheridan Road. He was asking a significantly higher amount for the property at that time. His partner at the time was much more reasonable, eventually bought out the prior owner of all his assets and everything, came back to the city and said, "Are you still interested? We want to work, I want to work with you on this moving forward." There was offers on the table for some of these other businesses, but since he had kind of committed to us verbally that he was going to work with us, he held off on those offers. We saw those offers, and there is definitely interest in businesses that might not be the best fit for getting that downtown, for getting that area of TIF III kind of sparked and going, so, you know, we have some ideas of what we'd like to put in there. We can't make this decision based on what might go there, we have to just make the decision based on, we want to have control in the future over what goes there, because transactions between private parties, we can't control what goes there. If somebody has property and wants to sell to another business, they can do that, we can't really intervene as a city. However, if we have control over these properties, we can determine who we want to sell to, at what price, and what's in the best interest of the city. So, again, on this property, we got appraisals, and they seemed in line with what we were looking for, to make sure that our offer was in line, but it puts us in a better position down the road for development, and increasing the tax base, and bringing in some more jobs in.
Can you also explain how we would be recouping our money through the TIF?
Well, yeah, anything that we would put in there is now, whatever revenue that brings in, whatever tax base that brings in, would basically go into the TIF. So if you had a million-dollar development, or a million-dollar investment go in there, then any taxes that that property generated would go into the TIF to replenish the funds that are used to purchase the property.
I think they're stating that that property, in that it is south of 33rd Street in Zion, is not in Zion Elementary District, 6th School District, so it will not affect their taxes. Okay? Item D, regarding the disposition of surplus...
Do you need to vote?
Oh, we don't. I thought we had. Sorry. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duttine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Flomini.
Aye.
Mayor Harrison.
Aye. Item D, now. Regarding the disposition of surplus property, Commissioner Flomini?
Thank you, your honor. Edza has a, what used to be a travel trailer, that they had turned into a rehab trailer that they could bring out to a fire, have coffee and food and things for the fire department or police, or whatever. And even though we hadn't had it very long, it was donated to Edza by Kramer's campers, and it's lived its life, the trailer is not structurally very sound anymore, and the equipment's been removed and installed in one of the other vehicles, and we want to just dispose of it. It really has no value, but after the clerk and I talked about it, our cost to dispose of it would be more than it was worth, and several people have expressed an interest in it. So I'd like to just clear it surplus and put it out for bid.
Very good. Is there a motion to do that? Can we hear him?
Second.
We have a motion, and a second. Discussion. Clerk, please hold the roll.
Commissioner Duttine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Flomini.
Aye.
Mayor Harrison.
Aye. Item 8A, under discussion authorization and approval, consider the purchase of the ice bridge located at 4410 Douglas Drive. Director Ianson, would you explain for the public what the ice bridge is?
I'd be happy to.
And...
Thank you, Mayor. U.S. seller commissioned a cell site located at 4410 Douglas Drive. They removed all their equipment except for a small section of ice bridge, which holds two city antennas. They're offering for the city to purchase this section of ice bridge for one dollar, so the antennas can remain in place. Attaches a purchase agreement for the purchase.
And the ice bridge is...
Oh, I'm sorry, an ice bridge handles all the cable and everything that runs up the water tower, so they run all the cable across that.
So that ice can't destroy...
Right. And there's a section of about four feet remaining attached to the water tower, where we have two city antennas.
Is there a possibility, I mean, there is always a possibility, Commissioner, is there a possibility that the ice bridge itself would cost us more in maintenance, or anything like that, or, I mean, a dollar is awfully inexpensive. I understand we have two antennas on that ice bridge.
That is correct.
But now we're going to be maintaining it.
I don't foresee any issues with maintenance.
Okay.
That would be no.
That would be no.
I was looking over there for head shaking.
All right, very good. Is there a motion for this purchase?
I make a motion to purchase the ice bridge located at 4410 Douglas Drive. Second.
We have a motion and a second, to purchase this ice bridge for one dollar. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duttine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Flomini.
Aye.
Mayor Harrison.
Aye. Item B is to consider the proposal from Piper Power for the replacement of the transfer switch and the installation of the start circuit wires for the emergency backup generator in City Hall. Director Ianson.
Thank you, Mayor. During a routine maintenance inspection of the emergency backup generator in City Hall, Lion Eye Power discovered corrosion in the transfer switch. It appears that moisture is leaking from the conduit into the transfer switch, causing corrosion, and potentially preventing the transfer switch from operating properly. In the initial installation of the generator, the start circuit control wires were not installed properly. Without control wires, the generator will only start with a loss of combat firing. If we had an equipment failure, it would only activate the transfer switch, would not activate the transfer switch to emergency power. So basically, what we're having, the transfer switch, when the power goes out, it detects it, transfers over to emergency power. Somehow moisture got through the conduit condensation, or whatever, got into the controls of the transfer switch, completely corroded, so we don't think it's going to work properly. There's no way to repair it, we have to replace it, so. Piper Power gave us a proposal of $7,545. Lion Eye Power Products gave us a proposal of $7,889. These are both figured for Saturday installations, because the power will be down for a period of time. Staff has recommended the lowest proposal, Piper Power, for $7,545, for the replacement of the transfer switch and the installation of the start circuit control wires.
Very good. What is the pleasure of council?
I move approval of, or, of awarding the bid to Piper Power for the replacement of the transfer switch and the installation of the start circuit control wires for emergency backup generator in the City Hall. Second.
We have a motion, and a second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duttine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Flomini.
Aye.
Mayor Harrison.
Aye. Item C, tabulation of bids for the removal and replacement of flooring at 2101 Salem Boulevard. Chief Dumian.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The city received five bids for the removal and replacement of tile and carpet flooring on the first floor of the police department. Staff worked closely with Director Ianson to set the specifications for this project and acquire these bids. Attach for the bids as follows. Floors to you, $16,954. Cinni Ambrose Tile and Carpet, $16,966.24. Builder Lands Incorporated, $17,205. Vortex Enterprises, $19,380. Tiles and Style LLC, $30,399. I respectfully request the city council approve the bid submitted by Cinni Ambrose Tile and Carpet in the amount of $16,966.24. At a mere $20.24 higher than the lowest bid, I ask that the city use a business located within the city of Zion. Monies are budgeted, and because of year 15, under capital projects, underlying item 5400105600 for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
What was the name of that company again, chief, that you're recommending?
Cinni Ambrose Tile and Carpet.
And what was the figure again? I move for approval that we purchase the, or have them do the work. Sixteen thousand, nine hundred and what?
Sixty-six?
Fifty-six.
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
And twenty-four cents.
And twenty-four cents.
Second. We have a motion, and a second. Discussion. Cinni Ambrose is a local business here on Sheridan Road in Zion. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duttine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Flomini.
Aye.
Mayor Harrison.
Aye. Item D, consider a quote from Deegan and Associates of Libertyville for engineering services for closed landfills in the city of Zion. Director Colangelo.
Thank you, your honor. You may have a quote in your packet from our environmental consultant for engineering services for the closed landfills. Groundwater analysis and inspection quarterly reporting to the IPAs required as part of our post-closure permit. Staff requests and recommends approval of a quote for these services from Deegan and Associates of Libertyville, Illinois, in the amount of $46,600. This contract is for the next fiscal year and will be budgeted item in the waste fund accordingly. And also keep in mind, we are still applying for semi-annual, so this could be cut in half.
Very good.
Which landfills do we have?
The closed landfills at the end of four, closed landfills one and two.
Okay, those are considered two?
Yeah.
Okay.
The hill is one, and the flat ground is number two.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Your honor, I would move that we approve a quote from services from Deegan and Associates of Libertyville, Illinois, in the amount of $46,600.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duttine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Flomini.
Aye.
Mayor Harrison.
Aye. Item E, consider amending the city of Zion right-of-way vacation policy. Director Colangelo.
Thank you again, your honor. In 2006, the city adopted a right-of-way vacation policy for right-of-ways throughout the city. The intent of the policy at that time was for residents who wished to expand rear and side yards for green space, or possibly needed parking areas, or setbacks for building needs. It was also the intent of the city to relieve the burden of maintenance of these areas, which in most cases terminated with no need for further extension. Recently, in the last few years, we have received requests for right-of-way vacations from entities other than residential. The requests have also been for improved rights of way. Currently, the values established in our policy is 25 cents per square foot for green space, and one dollar for all other uses. Staff is requesting and recommending that Section 4D of the attached policy be stricken in its entirety and replaced with the following. Right-of-way values. For the purpose of this policy, the city will establish rates on a case-by-case basis for right-of-way property. Approval of the right-of-way vacation will be contingent upon the rate agreed to by the city and the requesting applicant. And I did go over the language with Attorney Randall, she's incurred with the language.
So in other words, each face is open for debate as to the value of the right-of-way being...
Between the city and the applicant. Correct.
Hmm. What's the pleasure of the council?
This stems from, we go back to 2006, we had no policy, and we were pretty much deeding, as Director Colangelo said, we were deeding property over, splitting alleys, splitting vacant lots to the residents, but, and there really wasn't much of a value to the land other than to the person who was accepting it. And we only really asked them to pay whatever recording fees and things like that. But as Ron said, you know, we've been getting requests from through right-of-ways, we've been, we've been giving away streets and alleys, and, you know, land that we've had investment in, in terms of infrastructure and things like that. So, that being said, I would move that we accept this recommendation and make this our new policy.
I have just a question. How will that affect, for instance, rights of way, parkways, things like that, adjacent to MRM-C, and to other large, you know, possible users of that right-of-way? Is that how we got to this place?
I mean, we just, it was a couple weeks ago, we just had one on the west side.
We've had, we've had, we've had some, well, a couple examples, MRM-C, for example. We vacated 26th Street. We also had some, the PUD development that came in. Those were approved alleyways that they had been using, and they, and the 27 Harbor Block and Hebert. These are actual streets and alleys that are improved, so they're being used for other than, you know, the expansion yard, you know, so you can fence it and have a shed or something. There's, I guess what I'm getting at is, when you get requests other than residential for those needs, there's more of a value to it than what the policy states.
Okay.
As you do it by the square foot.
Do we have anything, I guess I understand the old policy, then everybody would be treated the same, no matter, for residence and development. Is there any statement in here for how we'll determine the value of that property? Can we, can we relate it to the value of neighboring property, or adjacent property?
Well, I guess that's more of a real estate question, because the policy does ask, you know, you can have property appraised, but how do you appraise a city street? You have to be able to compare it to something. If you're normally going to get an appraisal, and you correct me if I'm wrong, you're appraising it, I have a lot, a commercial lot on, say, Sheridan Road, and you're going to appraise that to what the value, or what the market price has been for other properties along Sheridan Road. Now you're talking about a road, how do you appraise that? I guess you would have to appraise it to what's being sold around it, because, and I guess the negotiation would be between the city and the entity, because what is the future use of what you're giving up?
Is it not true that in the last several cases, if it was a street, a full-blown street or an alley, that Cinni Utilities in it, were those utilities typically then relocated by purchasing, by the purchasing agents?
Yes and no. Some of them still maintain easements, but some of them are, you know, some utilities have been relocated, but I guess the way I would look at it is, if you were to buy a vacant lot and put a building on it, build a brand-new construction, what is the value of that parcel compared to if you're not doing anything with it? You know what I'm saying? I mean, you could put a $2 million building on a city street, but right now, our value is one dollar per square foot for any use other than green space.
I agree with this policy wholeheartedly. I guess the only thing I'm looking for is something that would be a guide to you or Director Nabel, when you begin negotiating with the people, that you have, that we at least have a start point, or something that's consistent from one, from one property to the next, whether it's on the west side or the east side, that we're going to say, we're going to look at what adjacent property has sold for in the past. If there haven't been any sales, I don't know where you go, but if there have been, I think, I just think you guys need, I would like to see something perhaps that you could come up with, that said, this is where we're going to start, and I think it's the adjacent properties.
And that was, that was, that's my, well, that's my intent of wanting the language changed, is to, when, is to use that as a comparison.
If I could add something to that, I mean, as you were saying, with infrastructure and stuff, Commissioner Flomini mentioned, you know, tax dollars were used to put in these roads, put in these infrastructures, which was not the intent of the original policy, so, you know, even though there might be consistency of, like, value sales or something like that on property, when you get to roads, alleys, things like that, we have an investment in that, and, you know, on a case-by-case basis, it's going to be dependent on the actual property of what we've put into it that's been funded by the city as a potential recovery of cost, or there might be instances, again, where we've done economic development, where you're willing to let something go at a lower price because it has a greater benefit. So, I don't know if, I mean, consistency is going to be difficult, because every need is going to be unique... because every, every need is gonna be unique and it's gonna be dependent on the type of property requested for vacation.
I, I understand it, but the, the thing that, that scares me is that, uh, if you go on a case-by-case basis and things are gonna be different, um, then we're gonna be put in a position of somebody saying, well, you sold it to that person over there for this much and now you're selling it to me for that much and, you know, you're, we're gonna get, you did that to them because you wanna do them a favor and you're, I just think that if there's something in there that says this is where we're gonna start and, and I would also make the argument that we may have fifteen thousand dollars invested in an alley because we put whatever it is that we put in there years and years and years ago, and that's all we've, that's all we've expended on it, but to the adjacent property, it's a whole lot more than fifteen thousand dollars, and I think that we should be getting that amount of money when we're vacating those properties, so that's why I'm, I'm looking at that. I'm not sure we need to have the answer like tonight, but I would just like to see a guideline set up perhaps before we get into, get, get into an actual vacation of any more property on how we're gonna value that.
Well, I know some of them are gonna, we're probably gonna get some requests in the near future and, um, and, and we have to have a starting point somewhere because there, it, it's a new animal for all of us because there's also a value to the residents if you vacated an approved roadway that they can't traverse across it anymore. You know, how do you, wh- what's the value of that? You know, I mean, there's so many variables that go into it, but the best starting point is to look around and see what everything else is. I'm just looking out for the city.
Yeah, I, I-
They need to get the best bang for their dollar compared to private entities that our values are significantly lower than if it was a private entity or, uh, private property that was, that's being purchased.
Yeah.
For the same type of use.
I'd just like to see some type of a statement that says this is where we're gonna start when we do these things, or here's a couple, here's a couple of ways we can look at it. Um, so that you guys have something to go on when we're entering negotiations.
Well, we could talk to one of the, you know, one of the com- local companies that do appraisals and say, how would you, how would you appraise this? I mean, would you look at this square footage and say, okay, this square footage and the one over here? I, I, I guess that would probably be the first start right there.
I think this is a different situation because if you use a hospital as an example, a, a one block of city street has no value to the average person other than the ability to drive on it, but it certainly had a big impact on the expansion of the hospital. It had much more value to the hospital than it did to, than to the people next door. So I think that it's, it's, would be kinda hard to, to lay down, uh, you know, a policy that says this is where you start. I think it really depends on where, what the project is. Vacations are typically, uh, people approach us for va- a vacation of property because they have a need for it. The need is, is their value, not, not a standard book value, I think.
Right, and, and I, I guess, Commissioner, when I, I, I think we're talking along the, the same lines. And we'll use the hospital if, from, from my perspective, if we've got, uh, a thousand square feet of street that they want vacated and they've just, and we're, our po- our policy is twenty-five cents a square foot?
It would've been a dollar, still not enough.
A dollar a square foot and they've paid, uh, you know, five or four hundred thousand dollars for a thousand square feet right next to what we're vacating, yeah, I'm, I'm guessing I think our property should be closer to the, uh, to the property that they bought right next to ours rather than the dollar a square foot. That's what I'm talking about.
Well, plenty of doubles advocate. It would also allow an eighty-eight billion dollar expansion to the hospital that may not have happened if they couldn't have the street. So there's, there's a value there too.
There's gonna be a lot of variables to play into each of these cases and we, we- we're, we're just gonna have to, like you say, you're gonna take each one on its own merit, but as Commissioner Flamini was saying, you've got, you've got a thousand square, or a thousand square foot road. It's got city sewer, water, it's got all kinds of other things in there, storm sewer and so on and so forth. And they're gonna move it all. And then they're gonna put a building up that might bring the city of Zion a hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes, in, in property taxes. There's a value to that. Are we, are we gonna be able to weigh all of those things, I guess is my question?
Well, we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna have to-
We're gonna try.
We're, I mean, we're gonna have to. I mean, the, 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 the authorization to purchase the property, it was earlier on in the meeting. There's right-of-ways, believe it or not, that are within those properties. So if Director Nabo is negotiating with a business coming into town, there's an incentive right there.
Mm-hmm.
He can carve out that square foot and say, now your footprint for your, your new future businesses is bigger than what it is because this, this is, this is part of our incentive package.
True.
We have this going right through the middle of it, which could go along with it. So it also gives him another tool that he can use.
True.
So I mean, it's, it's, it's all over the map, but right now, it's, it's set, they're gonna take the appli- because the policy comes with the application when you apply and it clearly defines it, how much it is. And if you're doing that, you're gonna get short change any way you look at it.
Mm-hmm.
I think we could all agree that, uh, all the years completed with the hospital, with the parking facility, we had to vacate an alley for that. And I, I believe that we would've given them the alley at no cost to get the parking garage. And that's what I mean by value. It really depends on, on the benefit to the city.
Right, yeah, right.
We tried for, uh, a few years ago, the building department, we tried to, to to basically give away a lot of our forty-foot lots by splitting them and most of the residents weren't interested. It didn't have any real value to them, other than they all thought it would raise their taxes. So we were turned on on almost every one of them. We tried that with unimproved alleys too. Uh, to, to, there's no value there. We can't, we couldn't give them away at the time.
I think in our policy too, there should be something in there for streets, uh, improvements, sidewalks, all of that should play a role as well because a lot of these vacations we've done, and we keep using the hospital as an example, we got new streets out of it. You know, new asphalt, new pavement, new sidewalks, new this, new that. So all of that is a factor when, when you place a value on vacating something or selling something off to whether, whether it be a private entity or, or public. So. Do we wanna reconsider this?
No.
Again, or bring it back, or do you wanna just move forward with what you have?
Well, I think if you change the language, it, it opens, at, at least you could have discussions with whoever would come forward without it just being that
That dollar.
That dollar mark. And I know we keep using the hospital for an example, but we've had other ones besides them that come forward.
Right, right.
And-
Well, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. On the floor, consider amending the city of right, city of Zion right-of-way vacation policy. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item F. Consider Zion Township's land payment settlement for property at ten fifteen Twenty-seventh Street. Commissioner Flamini?
Thank you, your honor. Bringing this before the council after the request of Township Supervisor Sherry Neal. Back in two thousand and six, I believe it was, or two thousand and seven, we sold the property where the township office sits to the township. The city owned the property. We acquired, I believe, with TIF money and sold it to, uh, Zion Township uh, to build the, the new facility. At the time, we sold it for like fifty-seven thousand dollars uh, with a payment plan to be stretched out over several years. Um, since that time, the property has significantly devaluated in, you know, in that land value. And the township has paid us a hundred thousand dollars towards it. We had talked last year at budget time about just forgiving the rest of the debt. Uh, and, and the reason for, for my argument in bringing this forward is it's taxpayer dollars whether it comes out of the township pocket or whether it comes out of our pocket. Uh, the township is struggling right now and the land was, is now based on what happened back then. And we were all a part of it. We were both, both boards. Um, I, I would, um, like to ask the council to just consider, uh, dropping the remaining, is it thirty, fifty-seven dollars?
Fifty-seven.
Yeah. Just to just, just drop that and call it even.
I support that. We have a motion and a second. To consider the one hundred thousand dollars paid as full payment for the township to the city of Zion. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item nine is for departmental commentary, department heads. We have none this evening. Number ten is announcements. February seventeenth, six thirty PM is the Zion Township Board Meeting. Seven PM is the Zion City Council Meeting. March three, at seven PM is the Zion City Council Meeting. Uh, we do have need for a closed session this evening. Before we go to closed session, I would just like to, um, to, uh, say to the public, thank you for your heartfelt condolences, cards, well wishes, flowers and so on and so forth, uh, to our family on the passing of my dad. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to go to closed session for the purpose of probable litigation?
We'll move.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Flamini?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Thank you.